All right, we'll wait.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please join me with Supervisor Bishop and the dedication.
Let us bow our heads to pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We thank you for our great country and we ask your divine wisdom for all of our leaders here today. May they be given the wisdom and courage in the decisions that we make today. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We thank you for the accomplishments of reaching our goals here today. Father, we pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me and Supervisor Watson in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion for an executive session to be held April 6, 2015 at 9:30 a.m. or at the conclusion of the regular meeting, whichever is later, for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03 subsections A, 3, and 4 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item one, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. We are going to move this item to the end of the agenda so that we can proceed in a timely fashion. Item two, committee and/or legislative reports. I'll start on my left. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. National Association of Counties Transportation and Infrastructure had a meeting. NACO's Transportation Committee Chair Peter McLaughlin spoke to us first. He said counties are responsible for 49% of the nation's road miles and they need to be invested in. Investment needs have grown, but funding is running out. Counties cannot afford to wait on transportation funds. He briefly introduced Transportation Secretary Fox, who spoke about the President's proposed Great American Act. Secretary Fox briefly mentioned that the Surface Transportation Bill has been reauthorized for several years now and that Congress has passed 32 short-term measures to fund surface transportation. He said he understands that when there is uncertainty of future funding, that it is harder for counties to move forward with their projects. He said the Great America Act looks at the infrastructure systems in generational terms, not year-to-year terms. The secretary mentioned that there has been no increase in transportation funds in the last 20 years. He continued this or contributed this to the gas tax remaining flat due to the increase in fuel-efficient vehicles. The Great America Act is a six-year bill opposed to the four-year bill the President proposed last year. He didn't go into details regarding the funding source, but it was hinted that the funds would come from increasing the gas tax with the possibility of lowering the income tax for middle-class Americans to help offset the rise in the gas tax. The secretary briefly mentioned a couple of things that are in the Great America Act. One, the bill will create a transportation trust fund, which will include highways and transit along with the passenger rail. The bill will give 29% increase in highway funding and a 62% increase in transit funding along with a 100% increase in passenger rail funding by putting it on a dedicated revenue path that does not that we do not have today. Under the current system, money flows to states to distribute the funds to counties. In the Grow America Act, additional dollars will be allotted to the MPOs and RPOs systems. They will be allowed to compete for $6 billion in funding over a six-year period. They hope this will encourage the MPOs and RPOs to work together on regional business to implement and design transportation projects that are critical to their areas. The bill will also expand Tiger. This year, Tiger will be funded at $500 million. Under this bill, Tiger will increase to $1.25 billion. The secretary also mentioned that Grow America will try to streamline the permit process by getting everyone together around a table to approve projects, hoping to streamline permits into one process instead of forcing projects to go through several steps over several months to obtain final approval. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Watson. Supervisor Watson.
None today. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop.
I have none.
Supervisor Angus.
I just have a short thing to say. We met the EBT, our Employee Benefit Trust and our Self-Insurance Trust, met last week and I'm going to ask that we get a report put on for next meeting so that everybody will understand. I have some good news. There's no rate hikes or anything like that, but there are some things that we want to share and we'll invite HR to come and give us a report on that. That's all.
Thank you Supervisor Angus. County Administrator Hendricks, can we get that report put on to the next meeting's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have no report. Going on to item three, the County Administrator's report. County Administrator Hendricks.
I have no report today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, County Administrator Hendricks. May I have a motion to approve the February 2nd and February 17, 2015 Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes and the February 20, 2015 Board of Supervisors Special Meeting Minutes?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Call to the public. I have no call to the public forums out here. In the event that we have misplaced one or more, is there anyone who would like to spend three minutes speaking to the board on any item which is not agendized? Seeing none, I'm closing call to the public. A proclamation naming April as the County Government Month in Mojave County. Is there a board member who would like to read this proclamation?
Are you looking at me for a reason?
I'm looking at you for a reason. This is what I call a subtle hint.
I would love to read the proclamation. Chairman Moss, thank you for asking. Okay, it is National County Government Month, April 2015. Counties moving America forward, the keys are transportation and infrastructure. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 300 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, vibrant, and economically resilient communities. And whereas counties move America forward by building infrastructure, maintaining roads and bridges, providing health care, administering justice, keeping communities safe, running elections, managing solid waste, keeping records, and much more. And whereas Mojave County and all other counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of its residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas through National Association of Counties, President Ricky Hockaman's Transportation and Infrastructure Initiative, NACO is encouraging counties to focus on how they have improved their communities through road projects, new bridges, building new facilities, water and sewer improvements, and other public work activities. And whereas in order to remain healthy, vibrant, safe, and economically competitive, America's counties provide transportation and infrastructure services that play a key role in everything from residences' daily commutes to shipping goods around the world. And whereas each year, since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to actively promote their own programs and services to the public they serve. And now, therefore, be it resolved that he, Steve Moss, Chairman of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Angus. Attorney Exstrom, do we need a vote on that or do we just accept the proclamation as read? Can I have a motion on the proclamation as read?
I'll make that motion to accept it as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Presentation. We have a presentation today concerning the Moss Mine Project, an update by Mr. Dick Whittington, and I'm still holding out for an ownership for the use of my family surname.
Well, I guess that'll be a tough discussion.
We'll negotiate after.
We'll keep it alive. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, for having me here again, having the opportunity to update you on the Moss Mine Project and perhaps some of the other things that Golden Vertex is doing in the area that may be of interest. Right now, if I can use one phrase for Golden Vertex, we're a company that's in transition. We have finished what we called our Phase One, which was a pilot plant facility. That facility is now on care and maintenance. We have security on-site 24/7, and the asset is being preserved for use at a later date. The Phase One project itself was, in short, simple words, a really good technical success. I'll just use one metric that's very key in the gold industry, and that is the recovery of gold that you get from the rock that you're mining. And in our preliminary economic analysis, which we did, to get some sense of whether we have a project here or not, we used a recovery of 75%, which means basically 75% of all the gold in the ground, we would be able to recover through milling and chemical means. In reality, in Phase One, we got 84% instead of 75. And in our business, that is a huge improvement from the previous number, and it's also a validation of the metallurgical process that we would be using to extract the gold. We had other technical successes, but that is by far the most important one, and that is the reason that we did Phase One, essentially to prove the concept of heap-leach technology for a potential mine at the Moss Mine Project. So that phase is finished. It's a success. So the question then is, how do we go forward? How do we use that success? And we have moved forward into preparing a feasibility study. This is a much more detailed document technically and is one that is usually used primarily to approach investment banks, lenders, and even significant investors who you wish to invest in your mine when you build it. We have finished the first part of that feasibility study, which is assessing the geology and assessing the metallurgy in detail. And that report was published on December 31. And for those who want to go to sleep at night, log on to our website, start reading it, and I guarantee you it'll be a success. But for those who are technically orientated, it's really quite interesting, and there's a lot of information in there that really tells you what the moss geology is about and how we intend to, in fact, extract that gold. We are now moving forward with two other key technical elements. One is what we call the geotechnics. That's the rock mechanics, the strength of the rock, which is very important in an open-pit mine. And also, we're looking at the hydrology. How are we going to manage the water in the area and use the water as a careful custodian of that natural resource? And that's all part of what we do. Once that is done, we then move into the design phase, and this is where the design engineers get involved to design the mine, design what we call our heap, and other parts of the process. We just awarded two new or our last two big contracts. One was to M3 Engineering out of Tucson, who I've worked with in the past in building a mine in Mexico, and the other is Goldr Associates, also out of Tucson. And for those in the mining industry, those are two very well-respected names, and I'm sure they will do a great job for us. The timing is somewhere around June 15, plus or minus. We will have this feasibility study finished. At that point, it will be then taken to the market. I basically put it in my briefcase and go and visit all sorts of people in Toronto, New York, Boston, Montreal, and other places. And we look for interested parties who wish to invest in the mine. And when that happens, you then obviously close on what is called a financing. You have money in the bank, and then you start the process of building the mine. Obviously, the market as it is today, as anybody knows, for gold continues to be volatile, and we are going to have to perhaps be patient. But then, on the other hand, we also may have people who see an opportunity to move into what this five minutes continues to be a solid project. We have uncovered no fatal flaws, as we call them in our business as we go through this process. There's nothing that would indicate that we should slow down or change our plans, so we are still proceeding. So even though we're on care and maintenance, we have, if you like, a small staff, the energy within the company is just as high as it was, perhaps a little higher because we really see the opportunity in front of us now. So that's the sort of high-level update on the project. I think I would be remiss in not mentioning that we are still very active in the community area. We're getting very, very close to our funding objective for the Little Red Schoolhouse, which is the second phase of the Colorado River Heritage Center in Community Park. The first phase, you might recall, we moved the headframe from the Moss Mine down to Community Park. This is a very exciting initiative. Actually, it was the idea of my wife. I will have to give her full credit, but it's one that we're getting very close to achieving. And then we'll move forward into other elements of adding cultural and historical centers to that park and help the area celebrate what we think is an extremely unique history and heritage of the area. And then we've also had a very strong educational initiative. There's the Golden Earth Science Center's been opened up at Mojave High School. We were able to twist Dr. Polton's arm. She's the dean or professor of the Lowell Institute of University of Arizona to actually come to Mojave High School, meet with students, and also meet with the school administrators, and we had a very productive meeting there. And the idea here is to build a bridge between Mojave High School and other interested educational institutions with the University of Arizona, which is one of the top mining universities in the world. And so again, we're just trying to build, if you like, pathways for education for kids to move onwards and upwards. And of course, Golden Vertex is looking to support that in different ways going forward. Lastly, I would be remiss to say we do have a great loss in our company. John Masterson, our Chief Information Officer, he's the guy sitting over there behind me next to Lisa McCabe, is leaving the company and moving to Texas. He's been extremely instrumental in helping me understand, you know, the dynamics of the local area and the issues in the local area and so forth. But fortunately, Lisa McCabe has offered her services, and she will be filling his shoes. They're different-sized shoes, but they're just as important. And she's certainly going to be welcome to the team. She'll be starting on March 31. So we're still, in summary, we're still very focused on our business plan, on our business objective. The market continues to be a challenge, but we're very much here, very much involved, and excited to be so. And I'm available to answer any questions.
I'll start with Supervisor Angus, since he is located in your district, though I'm still waiting for a survey to confirm that. Go ahead.
Thank you once again for coming and giving us these updates. They're always very interesting. And yes, this is my district, and I want to reiterate how important the Moss Mine has been in Bullhead City and instrumental in the growth of our cultural and our historical background and our history in mining. And I want to also talk about John Masterson, who has been such a wonderful face of the Moss Mine in our community, has done so much, and we're going to miss him. But he metaphorically gave the keys over to Lisa McCabe, who we know will do a great job. Fortunately, that means that Brita has disbanded, and I won't go too much into that, but that's a huge loss, but now a big gain for you, Mr. Whittingham. And I want to thank you again for all you do in the committee and the community of Bullhead.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Bishop.
I have no comments, but thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Watson.
Thank you for the presentation and best of luck on your recovery program.
Thank you.
Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing. I'd like to echo Supervisor Angus's comments to Mr. Whittingham. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for all that Golden Vortex and the Moss Mine has done for the Bullhead City and Fort Mojave area. I really hope that you get things up and running again in the very near future. I will say that you are a great company, and if more mining companies behaved as yours has, we would not be having half the problems we have today. You are an outstanding organization. I really do appreciate the time that we've had together, and I hope we have together in the future. I want to say that I believe that John Masterson has been a wonderful representative of your company. He has always been very helpful. He's bugged me when he's needed to bug me, and he's helped when he's needed help, and I really do appreciate that. And I fully expect Lisa McCabe, who I know fairly well, will continue in that very, very good trend. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for those kind comments.
Oh, you earned them.
That implies a huge obligation. I better bring my A-game to this project going forward. Thanks very much.
You will. You will. Thank you.
The presentation is now concluded, and thank you again to Northern Vortex for showing up. If I said you go, I thought I said Golden Vortex earlier, so I must have misspoke. So I apologize for that. Going on to the consent agenda, items 5 through 39, starting to my left. Supervisor Johnson, are there any items you would like to pull?
None.
Supervisor Watson.
None.
Supervisor Bishop.
None. I have none.
Supervisor Angus.
Yeah, I'd like to pull items 27 and 29.
And 29. And I would like to pull item 20. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda except items 20, 27, and 29?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Item 20. I pulled this only because of to avoid the appearance of a conflict, and so I will be recusing myself on the vote on item 20.
Okay, I move to approve item 20. I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries.
Thank you very much Supervisor Bishop. Going on to item 27, to set a public hearing at the April 6, 2015 Board of Supervisors' regularly scheduled meeting regarding revisions to Mojave County Ordinance Number 2002-03, anti-littering ordinance for the purpose of removing the five-day discretionary or notice period. This is from Public Works. Supervisor Angus.
Yes, thank you Chairman Moss. I pulled this. We spoke about this at our last meeting, and I don't think that enough people had time to come and talk to us when we first talked about it. I know this is just to set a public hearing. That's all we can talk about?
Well, it's just setting. A public hearing, so a public hearing won't even occur. So people have time in between this and the public hearing to contact you or...
Oh, okay. So that's how it's going to go down. Okay, that's fine. Then go ahead.
Is there any other comments on item 27? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Strike the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item 29, approve the new prisoner housing rates of $78 per day with a $61 booking fee as determined by the Office of Management of Budget effective July 1, 2015. This comes from the Mojave County Sheriff's Office. Chief Deputy Supervisor Angus.
Yes, thank you Chairman Moss. We didn't get much back up on this, and if I remember correctly, the last time there was a, we needed to take a vote on it, it was as a, some kind of hearing, we got to talk about it. And I do want to talk about it since it's being raised and it does affect all the cities. I think we need to talk about it, the necessity of it, why it's necessary to raise it. I think we need to talk about it, the necessity of it, why it's necessary to raise it, and that's why I took it off.
I actually was going to take it off also before you did Supervisor Angus. I need a few more weeks to study this before I come to a conclusion, so I would like to table this for a period of 30 days unless there's someone on the board or a majority of the board who has a vehement objection to that.
Make a motion to table item 29 for a period of 30 days.
Is there a second?
I second.
Discussion?
Discussion. Go ahead Supervisor Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, the question I'd have would be of our administrator. We have a budget process coming up. Is it going to cause any problems if we don't have this done?
The only, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, you know, I can speak for the county. I don't think it's going to cause the county budget process any issues. The constraint that it may cause is with the cities. They need the numbers as soon as they possibly can, and I haven't discussed with them at all, and I don't believe any of the staff has on delaying this decision on rates.
I suspect, and I was just saying, speaking for myself, that they would be very happy with a 30-day review before we raise their jail fees. So that's my suspicion. So they know it's either the current rate, or 78, or somewhere in between. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Going on to item 40, discussion of possible action. Ray authorize the increase of the Treasury Department's full-time employees from 21 and 1/2 to 22 as a budget-neutral action. Is Treasurer Cox available or a representative from the Treasurer's Department? Seeing none. County Administrator Hendrix, do you want to take a stab at briefing us on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, it's unfortunate the Treasurer isn't here to explain it. On all of these issues, we usually, in the review process, we have HR take a look at it, and they sign off on it, and we also have Finance take a look at it. By them signing off on this, HR looks at it to see if it's within the purview of the merit rules, if it's acceptable to accomplish in accordance with our merit rules, and Finance looks at it to make sure that what the Treasurer has purported in the realm of the budget, that there's sufficient monies and that what she's stated is accurate. So even though I don't know a lot about the particular issue, I do know that it's within budget and acceptable from an HR perspective.
Thank you very much, County Administrator Hendrix. For the edification of the public, I will state that the Treasurer has proposed that there'd be some slight adjustments to the pay scales, and that will allow her to increase her staff by half an employee, which she feels is necessary for the continuation of her duties. And since it is something which I have no difficulty with as it is budget-neutral, I personally think she's done very good work. Having said that, Supervisor Johnson?
I believe this is something that needs to be going into the budget session. I don't like the idea that we come in between and change positions. It's brought up in the backup about the system that was put in, left out of that was... Here comes Cindy now.
Here comes Treasurer Cox right now. I think you and Supervisor Bishop have gone to the same school or something, because you make the grand entrance at the last moment.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I was listening to it on my computer. I apologize.
Go ahead. We're talking about item 40. I'll give you, reveal the floor to you.
Thank you.
Treasurer Cox, and then we'll go back to Supervisor Johnson.
I'm sorry, I got interrupted with a phone call from our investment bankers, and I said, "No, wait." And then someone came in and said, "They're asking for you." Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
I apologize. Okay, so I didn't know we were this far. I thought you had pulled three other things, and I was going to have a few minutes, so...
We basically enunciated Supervisor Johnson that he preferred to wait to the conclusion of the budget negotiations before we make changes, even allegedly budget-neutral ones. I had made the comment that it seems like you'd made some adjustments to your pay scale, and that is how you enabled yourself to get to 21 and 1/2 to 22...
Correct.
...full-time employees with no additional increase to the county, and I personally favored that initiative. But that's where we left things stand, and now you have the floor to make any comments before we ask for a motion.
Thank you very much, Chairman and Supervisors. I would like for this to happen now, and the reason that I'd like it to happen now is we have temporary employees filling those positions, and they are, three of them have already entered the phase where they have to contribute to Arizona retirement system without receiving any benefits. And that's very difficult for them, number one, because they have to pay that out of pocket, and I'm not sure exactly how that works. I'm sure HR can explain a little bit better if they're here. But the pay scale that we are using for the new, the three positions that we're putting in place, one was a half-time position for a person that was here for 30-something years. So the half-time position covers the full-time pay for this new position. And we also have a savings because of the retirement issue of having 11 people that are between 10 and 30 years of employment in our area. And we expected that there would be some retirement over the four years that I would be here, but now I need to reorganize the office, and this is the first start of the phase where we actually have the people that we need in place. So if that half-time person had been able to continue with us, I don't know if she would have been able to do the job that was necessary based on our new computer system, because we do need somebody to do that job. And I had anticipated, hopefully, requesting that you would make that a full-time position because I knew that the pay disparity was going to be so large.
Okay, does any Supervisor, or, excuse me, I gave you a lateral move. Does Treasurer Cox's comments raise any questions on the part of the board? Supervisor Johnson?
I guess part of the backup, we talked about the savings on the system that was put in. I think we left out the part, I believe, I can ask the administrator, didn't it cost our IT $90,000 out of their budget to fulfill that contract?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I remember there was some costs. I don't remember the exact amount.
And now that we've gone away from the lockbox which you were talking about, it seems like our delay is weeks to get checks processed through the system. Is that true?
There was a time then that was the case. It's not the case now.
It's not the case now?
No.
I guess, and while the administrator says everybody signed off on this, just because somebody checked the box, I see nothing from, I can't believe that Finance or Personnel or Risk Management, did Risk Management do a review of this, which they usually do?
Risk Management, I worked with, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hendrick.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, it's not my understanding that Risk Management does a review of this. It is my understanding that what's being proposed here is within this current year's budget. I would like to say that all departments have been asked to submit a budget for this next fiscal year that includes a 5% decrease, and we expect that the Treasurer and all the elected officials will comply with our request to do so. And that may have some bearing on structure of departments, whether those cuts come from Personnel or whether they come from Operations. So with that said, you know, we try to accommodate our elected officials as best as we possibly can in their request on what they believe is necessary to operate their departments. On the flip side, we are going to be entering into some extremely difficult economic turn and, which will mean possible layoffs, and I would assume, I would hope that our Treasurer believes that the structural positions won't impact her submitting a budget with a 5% reduction for our next fiscal year.
Not at all.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, yeah, my only thing is with the budget being so close and because of these possible layoffs or reductions that are coming down, I just have a problem with redoing it and not having any real backup from OMB or anybody else who's looked at these issues. If there is a problem with Treasurer Cox's person paying for retirement system, they can't be involved in, as soon we'll get to the bottom of that, but that would be my only reason for not going along with it this time.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you Chairman Moss. I have a question for Treasurer Cox. Seems to me last year, the year before last, we made a change in the system, the Treasurer's system. Would this half-person be involved in continuing education and bringing your people up to speed in this system?
Yes.
And as I understand it, there's been some delays in total application of the system?
That's correct.
And this person would then be able to educate a broader base of your number?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. That's the big question I had, and thank you very much for bringing this about.
Thank you.
Your department is very important in the function of the entire county as you bring the money and put it in the bank. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and just so you know, we worked with, Bill and I both worked with HR, with Ken and Shondi very closely, and a new person, I believe her name is Jean Duncan? I always say her name wrong. Jean, yes, not Joanne. And we're working toward getting the job descriptions and all of the other pieces in place, but this was something that came up due to people being temporary for too long. That was the fact. We want them to be full-time employees. They're doing a great job. These three people are pretty amazing in our office, so...
Thank you very much, Treasurer Cox.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any questions before I let... No? Treasurer Cox, you can escape. I'm sorry that we took so much of your time.
Thank you very much. I apologize for not being here.
Can I have a motion on item 40 of the agenda?
I make a motion to authorize the increase of the Treasury Department's full-time employees from 21 and 1/2 to 22 as a budget-neutral action.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Thank you very much. Forty-one, discussion and possible action. Direct the Administrator of Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District to facilitate the consolidation of the district into Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District. To work with the staff and elected officials of the Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District to facilitate the consolidation pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute 48-822 and all other applicable statutory requirements. To direct the Administrator to facilitate the consolidation of the districts at the earliest possible date and to report progress to the Mojave County Board of Supervisors as necessary. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak on this item? I believe we have the Administrator sitting in the corner. If you could come and brief the board and the public on this issue, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. Good morning, Chairman Moss and members. John Flynn, I'm the Administrator for the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District, appointed by the Board of Supervisors 18 months or so ago, almost two years ago. So as the boards are aware, the district was in fairly difficult financial shape when the Administrator was appointed, and we were in debt well over 3/4 of a million dollars, which is really a pretty large amount given the size of that district. So over the last two years, we've implemented a financial recovery plan, and certainly that was at the behest of the Board of Supervisors and that you allowed us to do that. We're in a position now where in the fiscal year that begins July 1, the district will be able to be independently operated again, and so there's time to make a decision about how the Board of Supervisors wants to go forward. And there's really kind of three options. Always, there's always status quo, which is not my recommendation. There is call for a special election and have a new five-member independent board put in place out there. The issue with that, of course, is always that the district is continuing just financially at kind of a crossroads there, and so it needs to be actively financially managed, and any kind of problems are going to be amplified, and we don't want to see the district go back into insolvency. And then the final, and what is my recommendation, and my recommendation to staff, is to consolidate the district into the Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District, which is a large fire district, as you're well aware, here that surrounds the Kingman area. It's very well-managed and governed, financially stable. They've consolidated other districts into the Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District in the past, and of course, that's my recommendation since those two districts are adjacent. I can just tell you, just as a matter of operations, there's 155 fire districts in the state, and we continually, I'm the executive director by contract of the Fire District Association, we continuously try and promote districts that are adjacent to one another to consolidate, because you get the efficiencies of scale from that, and a larger fire district typically is able to track professional managers and professional finance managers, which keep the districts financially stable and afloat, and I certainly stand for any questions.
Excellent. I'll start to my right. Supervisor Angus, any questions? Supervisor Bishop?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to commend you and Fire Chief Patrick Moore for the patience and the dedication that you've shown to our rural fire department. And I think because of the meetings that you've held and the communities and the education that I have heard very little, very little confusion. There's some of the folks out there that don't like what's happening, but we're now solvent and ready to go on with the fire department as such. So I just wanted to thank you, and I think the citizens of Meadview and Dolan Springs and Mead City also, thank you.
Chairman, thank you Supervisor Bishop, and I would say that I have another public meeting today out in Meadview, and I hold a public meeting every month, and we try and be as transparent as possible. We're very fortunate that Chief Moore and the Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District agreed to come over to LMRFD by contract and manage the day-to-day operations on that in contract, and we're very fortunate to have Chief Moore. He's homegrown here in Kingman, and I've tried to take him and have him do that kind of thing in other parts of the state, but he's going to stay right here at home. But we, again, we try and be very transparent and provide the citizens in both Dolan Springs and Meadview on a monthly basis, complete information about the district and where we stand and how we stand financially and what we think is the best thing to move forward.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you. Mr. Flynn, you've done a yeoman's job considering the situation which you took over 18 months ago, and for my office, I say thank you very much.
Chairman Supervisor Watson, thank you.
Supervisor Johnson?
You'll have us paid off July?
Thereabouts, sir. Yes, sir. We should be financially independent in that fiscal year, absolutely. There have been a couple of things that have come up. As always, we had a, the district has, in the past, has not been able to keep up with their maintenance and operations and capital acquisitions, and so we had several primary response units with 180,000, 200,000 miles. We had to replace one of those this year, kind of set us back a little bit in our timeframe. We bought a surplus military ambulance to replace one of our ambulances that was not functional anymore. We've had a few other minor maintenance issues that we've had to address, which kind of set our schedule back just a little bit, but yes, sir, we should be.
All right, so let's say hypothetically, July 1, you paid us off. Will that district be debt-free then?
Yes, sir. So we don't have any, we don't have any, we don't have any more long-term debt at all, and all of our creditors are paid with the exception of the creditors that were on with month-to-month utilities and fuel and those kinds of things. Yes, sir Supervisor.
So what does it take to, I mean, we brought you on to get this out of debt and walk away. Now you want us to look at putting them into another district. Isn't that those people's choice out there? Can't we as a board just say, "Hey, you're back solvent now"? I mean, if we want to call for a vote, which will cost the taxpayers more money, we could call for a vote to see if they want to continue it, but I guess my opinion is that's the taxpayers out there's responsibility. If they want to combine with somebody else, I don't think that's our decision.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Flynn, you've done a great work, and I truly appreciate your service to Mojave County.
Thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions, comments for anyone on the board before we call for a motion? Statements? Anything? Can I have a motion on item 41 of the agenda?
Chairman Moss, I'll make a motion. I move that we direct the Administrator of the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District to facilitate the consolidation of the district into the Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District, to work with the staff and elected officials of the Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 48-822 and all other applicable statutory requirements, and to direct the Administrator to facilitate the consolidation of the districts at the earliest possible date.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There you go. Forty-one. Going on to forty-two. Discussion and possible action. Ray, direct the County Attorney's Office to work with the Development Services to prepare and propose an amendment to Land Division Regulations to require the showing of water adequacy in accordance with AR Section eleven-eight-two-three. Since it's under my name, I'll start, and then we can move on to any Board member questions or comments. This is a preliminary step, it is not the final step, obviously. Last time I tried a water ordinance had to do with the use of A-plus effluent. I did that within my office, occasionally consulting with experts like Mr. Hunt and some of his staff, occasionally consulting with business members in the community. This is a different process to get to the same result, which is that we would turn it over to Attorney Ekstrom to work with Mr. Hunt, and after the course of two, three months, they would come back to us with a proposed ordinance along these lines. So, I'm trying to take a different path to the same result, which is dealing with our water adequacy issues. My understanding of the current state of the law, and my understanding could be incorrect and incorrect, so I'll invite Mr. Ekstrom to correct me, or County Administrator Hendricks to correct me. Right now subdivisions do not require a hundred-year adequate water supply. If they don't have that requirement, all they must do is disclose the defects in their public report, and they can build the subdivision. This new ordinance, if it's passed unanimously, and would have to be passed unanimously at the time an ordinance comes back to us, would require developers of future subdivisions, not current and prior subdivisions, to have an adequate one-hundred-year water supply, and if they did not, they could not build. So, the consumer, the homeowner, would be certain that they have adequate water resources. I think this is important for two reasons. One is a homeowner-consumer protection issue. Public reports can be very lengthy. I'm not certain many homeowners read them, just like I'm fairly positive that most homeowners don't read their contracts with their mortgage company. The stack of papers they come by and have you sign in eighteen, twenty, thirty different places. I'll tell you that even myself, as an attorney, I look for the price, the interest rate, the duration of the loan, the monthly payment, things like that. I don't get into the nuts and bolts, and I worry that a homeowner could find themselves in a situation where they glanced at their public report, confirmed it had to do with their house, saw the paragraphs dealing with streetlights and sidewalks, and didn't read too deep into it, and missed the two or three sentences dealing with the inadequate water supply. The second issue is, of course, is our problems with water resources, and we do have a problem with water resources. That problem will increase over time, and this is a step to deal with that. That said, I freely recognize, as people who I respect greatly have pointed out to me, that this could pose a burden on future growth of Mojave County, because we're talking about the manufacturing, the building of homes, and the future homes, and that there's some areas where this could be proved to be problematic. So, if we pass this motion today to direct a proposed ordinance to come back to us, we'll have plenty of time to review and to consider that proposed ordinance and the pros and cons, because there are a lot of pros, and there are also a lot of cons. That's what I have to say on this particular issue. I'll yield the floor. I guess we'll start with Supervisor Johnson this time and work our way down. Supervisor Johnson?
I think that it's covered the way we have it now. I believe we have a lot of dry lot subdivisions that have gone in in the past, and while it's not something I would live in, I think a lot of people, Supervisor Watson probably be more knowledgeable on that, because I think a lot more of them are in his district, but I don't know that I could support it, because a lot of our people live that way now.
Supervisor Watson?
I do have some concern, but I would be willing to adopt it, take a look at it. Sixty-five percent of Mojave County is in my district, and I understand that most of those subdivisions probably couldn't follow that requirement today, but I would be in support of looking at it.
Supervisor Bishop?
My comment will echo Supervisor Watson's, but with the water situation the way it is now, the drought condition all of Arizona is concerned about water, and Mojave County as well is concerned about water, so I think we should look at everything possible that we can do, because we can't wait until it's on top of us before we make these kind of decisions, so I would be in support of looking at this closer.
Supervisor Angus?
Same here. Just preliminary, just getting more information to make a good decision about these issues that are coming at us quicker and quicker, so I can prove, I can...
Excellent. Is there any other questions, comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to direct the County Attorney's Office to work with Developmental Services to prepare and propose an amendment to the Land Division Regulations to require the showing of water adequacy in accordance with eleven-eight-twenty-three and bring it back for discussion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Make it ninety. These things are hard to draft.
Bring it back in ninety days.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Now, my understanding, just so I'm clear, County Administrator Hendricks and Attorney Ekstrom, is that the majority can direct you to prepare and bring back an ordinance, but eventually, this has to have unanimous consent in order to become effective law within Mojave County. Is that correct?
No, go right ahead. Mr. Chairman, that's both my understanding of your authority and also in reading eleven-eight-twenty-three requiring unanimous vote of the Board. It's as if approved by unanimous vote of the Board of Supervisors may provide that except as in certain instances, that the Board wouldn't approve a subdivision that didn't have an adequate water supply.
So essentially, you'll be required to ordinance the way we can contemplate it, but to become effective as an ordinance, we'd have to have one hundred percent. Is that correct? I'm doing this for the purposes of the public, not for us. I think we all know the answer.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the language is that the Board shall not approve a subdivision unless it has a hundred-year water, adequate water supply.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Going on to item forty-three. Discussion and possible action. Ray, the implementation of NACO's Prescription Health Dental Discount Program for all residents of Mojave County. This agreement will amend the current NACO Prescription Discount Card Agreement by adding the Health and Dental Discount Program. The new agreement will continue for the initial five-year term, allowing for successive one-year terms thereafter, subject to the provisions of the agreement. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for those who might not have had the backup, Mojave County's been a member of NACO's Prescription Drug Program for a little over a year. In that year, county residents who participated in the program have saved roughly five thousand dollars in their prescriptions. With the success, the prescription program, Mojave County should consider adding the Health and Dental Program onto our agreement with NACO to help county residents save on dental, vision, hearing, and some prepaid health expenses. While NACO's Prescription Health Dental Discount Program is not considered insurance and does not count towards meeting the insurance requirements established under the Affordable Care Act, it does offer county residents fifteen to fifty percent off dental care and is honored by more than one hundred and ten thousand participating providers nationwide. The dental discounts help people who are uninsured, but can also complement health insurance plans or work with health savings accounts and flexible spending account. The program is free to the county and very inexpensive to the residents. For people, especially like on Medicare, where they have, there's some processes that aren't covered, especially in the dental part, this would be a discount for those. I'm surprised, one of the papers did pick up and carry an article on this. I got a lot of calls from the public, also from one of the hospitals wanting to know how they could participate in the program, so it is no cost to us. I think it's something that could help the citizens of Mojave County, and that's why I brought it forward.
Thank you very much Supervisor Johnson. I think it's a worthy endeavor. Supervisor Watson, do you have any questions or comments about this?
No comments, but I have total support.
Excellent. Supervisor Bishop?
I see nothing but good on this program, so I think NACO, and I think we should do it.
Excellent. Supervisor Angus?
Same here. So, I move to approve the implementation of NACO's Prescription Health Dental Discount Program for all residents of Mojave County.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Excellent. Item forty-four. Discussion and possible action. Ray, ratify Board of Supervisor Resolution number two-zero-one-five-zero-five-four in opposition to the designation of the Grand Canyon Watershed Monument in Northern Mojave County, Arizona, resulting in the permanent loss of multi-use public lands due to the special land use designation. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you Chairman Moss. Yes, I bring this resolution to you today because of its importance to Mojave County as we are a direct neighbor to this action. I'm looking for ratification of the resolution today. I did make a presentation in Flagstaff to the congressional delegation up there and did at that point tell them that it has yet to be ratified, but if you would like to ratify it and read it, that would be great.
Let's hope that happens in the next few minutes. Supervisor Angus? Any questions or comments?
Oh, no. I'm all in agreement of this.
Supervisor Bishop?
Same here.
Supervisor Watson? I'm sorry Supervisor Watson. Supervisor Johnson?
No, it was a great idea.
Any... I will also say that Supervisor Watson prevailed upon me to put my signature to a proclamation. Makes me very antsy, but when he's staring at me, I say yes. Can I have a motion on item forty-four?
I make a motion that we ratify the proclamation and sign it.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Be opposed? Excellent. Now you can tell them it's been ratified.
Very good. Would you like to read the motion or read the resolution?
I'll read the resolution, yes, just so the folks know what we're talking about. Resolution number two-zero-one-five-zero-five-four. A resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Mojave County, Arizona, in opposition to the designation of a Grand Canyon Watershed National Monument in Northern Mojave County, resulting in the loss of multi-use public lands due to special land use designation. Whereas Mojave County is one of the four original counties created by the first territorial legislature and is the fifth-largest county in the continental United States with a total land area of thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-one square miles, and whereas of those thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-three square miles, only sixteen percent is privately owned, with over seventy percent of federal lands comprised of eighteen official wilderness areas that are a part of the National Wilderness Preservation System, and whereas the large numbers of wilderness areas in Mojave County has resulted in restrictions from special land use designations with net loss of wildlife resources, wildlife and recreational dependent economic benefits, limits on access, and reduction of multi-use public lands necessary for the conservation of wildlife and natural resources and wildlife management, and whereas public land managers have the responsibility to the people of Mojave County and the state of Arizona to ensure continued opportunities for multi-use recreational activities. The FLPMA nineteen-seventy-six is the Bureau of Land Management's Organic Act that establishes the agency's multi-use mandate to serve present and future generations. Once federal lands are converted to special land use, such as wilderness and national monuments, the FLPMA mandate no longer applies, and those lands permanently lose multi-use provisions. And whereas, in spite of organic legislation emphasizing multi-use of public lands, neither the USFS or BLM have established any objectives for acreage of public lands to be maintained in full multi-use, free from restrictive designations in Arizona. And whereas the Multi-Use Sustained Yield Act of nineteen sixty and the Federal Land and Policy Management Act of nineteen seventy-six, both legally prohibit the federal land management agencies from affecting the state's jurisdiction and responsibilities. Congress passed the Arizona Wilderness Act of nineteen eighty-four with a full understanding and intention that federally regulated mining and grazing would continue on much of the Arizona Strip and the Kaibab National Forest. The BLM codified the Wilderness Act Agreement and all its subsequent resource management plans from nineteen eighty-four through two thousand eight. Now therefore, be it resolved, that Mojave County Board of Supervisors strongly opposes the designation of a Grand Canyon Watershed National Monument in Northern Mojave County, Arizona, which locks away one-point-seven million acres of land in Arizona instead of conserving them, resulting in the permanent loss of multi-use public lands due to the special land use designation. Be it further resolved, that Mojave County stands with Senators John McCain and Jeff Flake in stating, "The greatest threat to the watershed of the Grand Canyon is the ongoing fifteen-year drought in the Southwest. A national monument designation does nothing to address the historically low snowmelt or surface waters levels that feed the Colorado River and its tributaries. Arguably, the creation of a new monument might worsen watershed health if land managers and private owners are restricted from thinning the area's overgrown forests, or if hunters are barred from culling overpopulated wildlife. Arizona cannot afford to have its hands tied when it comes to controlling wildlife populations, enhancing its water supplies, and preventing wildfires." Senators John McCain and Jeff Flake, news release March ten, two thousand fifteen. Approved and adopted this sixteenth of March, two thousand fifteen, Stephen C. Moss, Chairman of Mojave County Board of Supervisors. Folks, that's the resolution. Supervisor Johnson?
And I think if people aren't understanding or getting it, if this goes through, it doesn't take Congress to act on this, the President can act on his own, and it will, whether you agree with mining or not, it will stop mining. It will also stop the same thing in there, all hunting, all, if there is any fishing there, fishing, all off-road vehicles, all hiking, all, you know, rock collectors. I mean, it will basically bar our people and any visitors, and especially in this area, we get a lot of people that come here for tourism to the Kingman area, especially in... It's good for their economy, so it's something they need to get involved in.
And I thoroughly agree Supervisor Johnson. I will say, I don't think there's anyone on this Board who's opposed to mining. We want our mining companies to be good neighbors. We haven't had much of a problem with that in Mojave County. It's been elsewhere that we've had the occasional problem. And I will say that when it comes to two points in this resolution, the problems arose in two thousand eight. I'll leave it to you, the viewing public, to decide why that might be. And also, there is a bit of a controversy regarding the sixteen percent privately owned and in Mojave County. Our county assessor, Ron Nicholson, has done a preliminary review, and it's actually thirteen-point-seven-six percent, but he's doing some further work just to double-check and confirm that. So, the situation can be even worse than we think it is. Regardless, thank you very much. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session so we can pick up item one of the agenda?
Motion's going to Executive Session.
Second.
Do you want, Mr. Chairman, do you want to adjourn this meeting?
Yeah, I'm going to back up. Can we adjourn the regular meeting so you folks can be released? We could be a while in our Executive Session.
I'll make a motion we adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The regular meeting is adjourned. Can I have a vote on the pending motion to recuse ourselves to Executive Session?
Shall I move?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.